And welcome to the February 26, 2015 Longview City Council Meeting. Another month in the books, huh? Tonight, we're going to start the prayer and pledge. We'll have Reverend Doug Ashley with the Evangelical Presbyterian Church. Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and loving God, we thank you for this body of leaders. Pray for your wisdom for them tonight as they make decisions about our city. Father, I also pray that in this place that there would be freedom to speak. That's the beauty of our system, that we get to speak about what it means to govern us. Lord, I pray for mercy to those in this city who need mercy, for justice for those who need your justice. And we lay all these things before you, knowing that you are our God. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you very much for being here tonight. Okay. Okay, we're going to start tonight with our citizen comment. I have a speaker card tonight from Mr. Ed Moore.
I'm speaking on an agenda item.
You are? Well, come on up and speak. It's not a public hearing, so we'll speak now if you don't mind.
On agenda item, action items on the Longview Square apartment complex, I just, I want to first express my appreciation to ITEX for undertaking this project. You know, the comprehensive plan, the main focus is improving the quality of life in our community. The city of Longview cannot do it by itself, however, we can be a catalyst to do that. And the public-private partnership that's being proposed here this evening on these two agenda items are essential, I think, to revitalizing the city of Longview, particularly West Longview, to improve that quality of life. So when these action items come up, I would implore you to approve both the endorsement of this application and the Chapter 380 Economic Development Loan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Just for clarification, unless it's a public hearing, citizen comments done at beginning of the meeting.
I hope after the election, I'll learn that.
You'll have some good teachers. Okay, consent agenda. Man, man, man. Consent agenda, council, is any item on a consent agenda that you'd like to pull off for separate consideration?
Move to approve.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, action items. A, resolution evidencing support for Longview Square. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, Dean, members of council, City Manager, Mr. Willard. I'm just here to introduce Mr. Colvin, who's going to do a brief presentation on this project and hopefully answer any questions that you have. This is the first of two items. The first one is a resolution of support of the project from the city, which is essential in the 9% tax credit application process. The second item is a resolution authorizing support for a 380 economic development agreement. Basically, it is for the sum not to exceed $60,000 in credit for development fees. It is secured and repayable, so it's basically a loan. And as previously stated, this is an excellent project, we feel, because it's a redevelopment project and a perfect public-private partnership. So I'm going to turn it over and invite Mr. Colvin to come up and give his presentation.
Thank you very much. My name's Clark Colvin. My address is 1665 Brighton Court in Beaumont, Texas. And it's been my honor over the last 14 months to work with David Willard and recently with Keith Bond and with Michael Shirley and Ingrid Self and several other members of your Development Services Department as ITEX has quietly become an investor in your city. Last summer, we acquired Longview Square Apartments from its prior, from the prior owner, and we're working to increase our investment partially through the use of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs 9% Competitive Tax Program. You've got Slide 1 up, that's fine, we'll just keep that for a minute. We are a Texas-based company that employs more than 160 Texans, now including four Longview residents, including Cassandra Fair, who's here this evening, that is our manager, Ally Nelson, who is the assistant manager, Roger Crittenden, who is the manager of maintenance, and then we have a young lady by the name of Rachel Raquel Gonzalez, who handles all of our makeovers. So we are a company that does offer benefits to our employees. We certainly offer health insurance and 401Ks match up to 4%. Unlike most developers, in addition to simply putting projects and financial packages together, we also make all the financial guarantees. We serve as general contractor, and we manage all of the properties that we own. We currently have about 4,200 apartments and single-family rental homes that we manage. We own 40 multifamily rental developments in Texas, and these developments include affordable and market rate and also historic properties. We've never sold a development, and all entities are owned by a single family, by a father and son. It's very difficult for us to point our fingers at somebody else, like a contractor or something, because where the buck always stops with us in most cities that we work with. Appreciate that. Since I know that Longview has a wonderful downtown redevelopment initiative well underway and have done quite a bit of good work, I included in Slide 2 a development that is a historical renovation of a 1927 hotel called the Jean Lafitte, located in the Galveston Strand District. It's now been renamed 2101 Church Street. It's 83 units of mixed-use, mixed-income development. And we have experience in housing renovations of all types and an interest in the opportunities that are presented here in Longview because of its unique history and culture. We've also been successful in competing in the TDHCA Competitive 9% Program and have received 23 Competitive Tax Credit Awards since 2004. About 50% of these awards are like the acquisition rehab development that we propose here in Longview. The other 50% are for newly constructed developments. We also consult with public housing authorities on mixed-finance developments using 4% competitive, non-competitive tax credits combined, often with community development block rent funds. Slide 3 is an example of a planned unit development that we have under construction. This replaces an old public housing complex that was a very high density, about 24 units per acre, between two refineries in Port Arthur. And this new development is being relocated to a new site and we think is a master-planned townhome development that's currently under construction in Port Arthur. Slide 4 is a development I'm very proud of. I've had a good bit to do with this. This is the Village of Palm Center. It's an ITEX-owned, $40 million mixed-use, mixed-finance, transit-oriented development that we have under construction currently in Houston. And I hope you can see that we would like for you to see that we do high-quality work. At Longview Square, the construction contract for the rehabilitation is 9.16 million, or about $76,000 a unit. This investment will transform the nature and look of the existing development. You will see major changes in the exterior facade, roof lines, landscaping, interior roads, parking. All structures will be ADA compliant. That project will be sprinklered for the first time, and all units will be both energy and resource efficient. There will be controlled gate access. With acquisition, major rehabilitation developments, TDHCA will not allow us to increase the square footage of an apartment's heated and cooled space, but we will remove all exterior, interior walls, ceilings, and flooring in each apartment. We'll replace the entire mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems and all system fixtures. The new floor plans have been developed. They will not be the same as the old. They will include more functional use of space. We'll have all-new equipment, appliances, lighting, including appliances never before offered to Longview Square residents. And our community room will include meeting areas, business centers, exercise equipment. And while under construction, existing tenants will be required to move no more than twice, we will keep them on-site and we will pay for all of those costs for them, including utility connection fees and things. So we'll be working very closely with the city. This major rehabilitation is possible. We're competing, as you know. There are two resolutions this evening. The resolution of support, TDHCA considers it so important that a city be behind a project that the highest single-scoring item is the approval of the city council in saying that this is something we'd like to see done. It's a 17-point issue. The other one, as Michael mentioned, is a small loan represented by about $500 per unit. It's a 10-point item, and we will have a very difficult time in getting this funded without both resolutions. We'll be happy to answer any questions. Someone said, I think, I couldn't remember whether it was David or Michael, full applications are due tomorrow. So we'll be running from here back to get this finalized and put together. And we thank you again for your staff. They've been just great to us, and we thank you so much.
Okay, questions? Garrett, go ahead.
Sir, how long has ITEX been in business so far? I saw some pictorial for Galveston and places like that.
Yeah, we have, we've been in business as, well, our principal and founder's been in this business about 35 years. ITEX is a relatively new name.
How long?
35 years.
35, you okay?
We have, ITEX was, the ITEX Group was actually created in 2009. We began using ITEX as far as our developer company and our property management company back in 2004.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Allen, yeah?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your appearance this evening. A couple of questions. First, on the loan, just for the information, people out there, it's a 15-year repayment loan on $60,000 with 3% interest. Does this loan give you any advantage? Is this as far as securing approval from the state?
Yes, sir, it does. It's a 10-point item. Actually, the contribution from a political subdivision is, it's got a maximum of 14 points. To get that would require a lot more contribution from the city. We have, we've got an opportunity this year to do the smallest potential thing that we can do, which is $500 a unit, and we can get seven points that way. By making this a firm commitment, we can get an additional two points, plus making it a 15-year initial face, or the initial loan period of 15 years, we get an additional point, so we can get a maximum of 10 points.
Is this a tax credit, federal tax credit project?
Yes, it is.
What if you do not receive those tax credits? Do you have plans otherwise?
Well, we're going, we own it, so we're going to have to do something. We probably can't do as, the extent that we would like to do. We would, we think this is a good property, and we think we would try again if we don't get it, but we think we've got a pretty good shot this year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Mannler.
So I've been outspoken in the past about the need for affordable housing in our city, and I certainly feel like this is a project that fits that bill.
Thank you.
Also, it is writing in accordance with our comprehensive plan, which is a focus on redevelopment. And I've done a little check, and I've asked for some crime statistics for the area, and I think that this will be a very positive thing on the area with regard to the kind of place that you're building, because we've seen it in places like South Estes, when Walmart and Cisco goes in, other people come in behind them. And I would anticipate that if you build the kind of place that you're describing, it would encourage, you know, other homeowners and other commercial people in the neighborhood, if you will, to do the same type of thing. So that type of thing is contagious. And so I intend to vote in favor of this. And to follow up what Mr. Allen was asking about, that only does this $60,000 help give you the points that you need, but it makes it more likely that they win, because we're not competing, he's competing, or they're competing against other cities, and so there's only X amount of dollars to go around. I don't know where all the projects are. I think there was one in Tyler that since has kind of fallen by the wayside, but.
There were actually two in Tyler.
Again, we're competing against other cities for the money, and that's why you need this endorsement. So I think that's a good idea also.
You're absolutely right. It's a small amount, but it's very important. We need the points, it's more than the money.
Because the feds want to see that the city wants the project, right? So it's understandable.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item B, consider resolution authorizing the city manager. Mrs. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor, Dean. As stated before, this is, this is the economic development incentive action that would authorize the city to basically allow them a $60,000 credit for development-related fees.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, I think that the main, the main point here is that this is just a win-win for everybody, this can be put together. I mean, we're enhancing an older property, which is going to obviously bring it to a high level on a tax rose. We're talking about a small amount of money that's being guaranteed for a loan, but the main thing here is that it helps to add weight in evaluation, if you will, on the applicant's application. So this is a good project, and it's some, I hope that going forward, even though I'm not going to be here, but there'll be other opportunities such as this that the city will have to help, you know, enhance older properties inside our cities. So I think this is a great project.
Could I follow up?
Sure.
So this is the kind of, this B here is the kind of creative thinking that we're going to need to do, because as we go forward, I know a lot of folks who are in favor of the comprehensive plan, think it's a great idea, but they're concerned about tax increases and where's the money going to come from. It's a perfect example of how we can get a multimillion-dollar project done, as you said, Mr. Mayor, for a relatively small amount of money. Very creative thinking.
Well, let me just say this too. I know there's recently been some, you know, some uproar about Section 8 housing, and I don't think there's anybody up here that supports going into some of these areas of Section 8 housing. So, but projects like this absolutely serve a purpose and a need, and hopefully we'll find other projects like this. So I also want to say, you know, congratulations to Mr. Willard and staff, I mean, for getting out and working with clients like ITEX to find these opportunities. I mean, and I think he's heard enough and got drilled enough about public-private partnership that in number-two pencils, let's don't forget that, you know, so that they understand, they understand that. So this is a good project. So at that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. If I can turn this back on, I'll see what else we've got to do. Okay. Items of community OC, an ordinance amending Chapter 13. Aye, you thought I was going to miss it, I'm marrying. Okay. Ms. Laura Hill.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Willard. The item being considered this evening is the result of one of the recommendations from the Mayor's Save the Animals Task Force, and this is an amendment to Chapter 13 of the Longview Code of Ordinances, authorizing the humane trapping of feral animals, spaying or neutering them, providing any necessary medical care, and then returning the animal to the area from which it was removed. The goal is to enhance and extend the life of homeless animals, reducing the number of euthanizations while ultimately reducing the number of feral animals in the community. And there are many, many other cities and organizations that support this type of initiative by the city.
Okay, and so this is in reaction, I guess, to what?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Stewart brought to us as an item that we wanted to consider, is that correct? Ms. Kristen, you want to kind of explain this a little bit?
Sure. Laura, might, and you can add if I skip something, but this is to allow our current animal shelter, the Humane Society, to develop a trap-neuter-and-release program. And that means for generally feral cats, they've had successful programs where you trap the animal, bring it in, spay or neuter it, and then return it to the same community. Now, something that I've had a chance to talk about with some folks this week is that this is really not going to be the end game. This is our first step in creating that, but like council knows, we're going to need to continue visiting and revisiting policy and developing those procedures. And this is just the first baby step in starting that program.
Correct.
And allowing the Humane Society to start doing that, because there's really no reason to wait. But it is something that we're going to have an ongoing conversation about.
Okay, without trying to be funny, but I've had some people ask me, well, why would you turn them back loose? I mean, once, once we get them, get them right, they're great mousers. I mean, they're going to, they're going to help from another perspective as far as, you know, working inside our community. So this has been, been done in a lot of communities around the country, some that we went and visited, like Chattanooga and whatnot, and they said, hey, seriously, the rodent problem in some areas went down significantly. So anyway.
And I think, can I add?
Sure.
I think if you do it correctly, it can help contain disease and help control that in the population, as well as decreasing the amount of cats in the euthanasia rate, which is something we've been actively involved with. If you bring them in, but you don't have to put them down, right now, I think we put down about 1,200 feral cats a year. So if we work on helping with that problem, that should alleviate a little bit of our numbers.
Okay, good deal. Garrett, go ahead. You got a, you got, you got a look on you. What's up, man?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we say trap and release, and like, as you just mentioned, you release them back out in the area. What are we actually accomplishing with that? Is there a process for that now, or we just developing it on along the way?
Well, and I think that's, that's to my point, yeah.
By the way, we're going to turn them all loose at your house. I'm kidding you, I'm kidding you.
We'll need to, you know, the Humane Society will be running the program right now, but we'll continue to have to work with them to develop that. How does that work? You know, what if somebody calls and they don't want the cat returned? We're going to have to kind of work through those policies and how that'll come into play. But the idea is that you trap, neuter, and then put it back there so that a cat doesn't come and take its place that is not fixed. So you've helped alleviate a little bit of the population, because they will, they will continue to come if you don't replace them.
And that's what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor. I think first we need to get some kind of standard procedure written out, the way we're going to handle this process before we actually say trap and release. We don't know what happens after that point, so I think.
Part of that is, is when they do this, they also actually mark them by clipping an ear.
Okay.
So that, so that they're not picking up the same animal again. They know, okay, that, that animal's been spayed, neutered, and whatnot, so they're not, they're not picking it up another time, okay? Because like Kristen said, a lot of these animals, they pick them up, or if they, if they don't, they come back again and again and again.
Right.
So they'll sell them. But, but that's going to be part of, you know, when, when the general manager, director, whatever that title's going to be for the animal shelter, that that's one of the reasons why we want to try to get this person hired soon, so that all these policies can be reviewed and things put in place before the shelter ever opens.
Because I would like to definitely see a standard operating procedure for that particular process also.
Right. And the, the problem now is that it's the Humane Society that's going to be running the program. We're just putting this in place so that they can start it now, and then once we start developing our own, we can learn from them and work with them. But right now, we don't have any control over the way that they do their operating. So this is the only step we can really take at this time, and then remember in the future that we need to update those policies, because I agree wholeheartedly that we need to figure out how that's going to work. Just right now, we aren't the ones running it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so we'll need a motion on that item.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to excuse Ms. Williams tonight.
Okay, Ms. Williams is on the way to represent us at Timco.
Timco.
Okay, so may I have a motion? Have a motion, a second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, items of community interest. What's up, John?
Only in South Louisiana.
Hey, man.
Does a.
Crawfish are on the way, buddy.
Cat become a mouser after they've been denied the privilege of reproduction.
Oh, say that again?
Only in South Louisiana. Where'd you get the word mouser?
Oh, man. I've, what else you got, John? I can't tell you all my secrets.
Well, come the first of the week, we're going to dedicate the new animal shelter in a groundbreaking ceremony, and I'm looking forward to it. Seven years coming, finally.
Yep, well, good job on that, John. Appreciate your help. Okay, Mr. Gary.
All right, well, the snow came on to you today. Glad to see that.
You were glad to see that.
Definitely different, for sure. He's sexy.
All right.
But that's basically all I got right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, good deal. Ms. Kristen?
I do, I would like to ask our community members to save the date for Thursday, April 16. Arzanta Club of Longview is going to be bringing a important educational program. It's called Close to Home, Educate Yourself on Sex Trafficking in Our Community. And it'll be a world-renowned expert, Dr. Renzetti, and she'll be talking about the warning signs and dangers of sex trafficking and how they impact us here in Longview. Many of our community members think that this doesn't happen here, but it does. We need to be aware of it, and we need to be aware of the signs to look out for, so you can help those that you love and educate other members of our community. So please join us.
Okay, good deal. Mr. Richard?
Yes, sir. Kristen, good for you, that's a great, Zonta's a great organization. My wife's a member too, and some of the stories she's come home and told me about the things y'all are finding out about our community is really kind of frightening. So it's good for people to know about this. I've asked Robin to put up a picture of The Green. Today, we dedicated a new park here in town called The Green. Congratulations to Kim Droge and all the members of the KLB Board for some great work here. This is going to be a truly unique park in Longview. It's going to have a walking trail, art, a standing art exhibit, half-acre walking area. It's adjacent to the Arboretum. It'll be connected to the bike trail. It'll eventually connect, we hope, with the comprehensive plan, right, Ms. Hill, to our Boorman Trail. So congratulations to all of KLB and to Longview. This is a great asset and a great addition to our city.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. First, I'd like to say thank you for the minister tonight, Doug Ashley. Mr. Ashley and his family moved here within the last several months. They're from Colorado, and they're at the new EPC church. And I want to say thank you to Robin for the program that she uses for having different ministers from our community say the pledge and prayer, and we appreciate that. But it's always nice to have people that are new to our community that moved here because they want to live in Longview, Texas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. City of Longview, encouraging residents to apply to serve on a variety of council-appointed boards and commissions. You're encouraged to apply online at longviewtexas.gov. You can also get applications right here at City Hall. Deadline March 2, 2015. Sanitation schedule, like everybody knows, we, we had some setbacks this week due to the snow. Our crew went out yesterday, and they were doing pretty good till the snow packed up and couldn't get up and down streets, so they had to postpone things. But I'm glad to say that they will, they will, we missed the Tuesday and Wednesday schedule, okay, because of the snow and weather. That today, they picked up the regular Thursday schedule. But Tuesday and Wednesday schedule, I want to make sure residents know, put your garbage out, put your recycles out, they're going to be picking up tomorrow. Whatever they don't get tomorrow, they're going to get it on Saturday. So please bear with us, but we're going to try to get this caught up so we can start fresh come, come Monday morning. So good job by Dwayne Archer and his team to get out there and get things picked up, you know, get them picked up for us. Okay, so let's see. Also, if you have any questions on that, call 903-237-1250. Mr. Sims mentioned the animal shelter, but like. Mr. Sims mentioned the animal shelter, would like to invite the public, I think that's 2 o'clock, 2 o'clock on Monday at, at the new animal shelter grounds, which are right there, and close to Lear Park on HG Mosley, is it?
303 HG.
303 HG Mosley, but, you know, come out and, and show your support, it's an important project, and we'd like to see everybody come out.
Bring your checkbook.
What's that?
Bring your checkbook.
Oh, bring the checkbook, always bring the checkbook. Mr. Willard, did you have something?
No, sir, I didn't, thank you.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay, we had a pretty good contingency, go down to Austin this week for the Longview Gregg County Day, and got to meet with not only our local legislators, but, you know, people from energy and transportation, economic development, education. It was a good, it was a good informative, it was a pretty long day, but got a lot of good info that was obtained down, so we appreciate, I think it was the, the chamber that, that arranged and put that together. Lead Co. members were there as well, so it was a good informative day that we all got to enjoy. So, listen, please continue to be safe on the roads, all the ice is melting, but continue to be safe. Thank y'all, the meeting's adjourned.